All right, good morning everyone and welcome to Commissioner's Court. We appreciate you being here. Let's begin as we always do with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance if you will stand with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today and humbly ask that you take control of this agenda and guide us through each point and guide us to the appropriate decision, whatever that may be. We are here to serve the community and we ask that you enable us to do exactly that. We thank you for our visitors and those that will address the court today and for the messages they will bring and the questions that they ask and we pray, Father, that you will prepare us for that and again, work us through each and every item. We pray for our first responders. We pray for our servicemen and women wherever they may be. We ask for your complete and total protection over them. Bless our community, our county, our city, for those that work for these entities, for those that pay taxes, and for those that live here. We thank you for your blessings and we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. We pray all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
(Inhales) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All right, welcome once again to our first meeting of the month of August. Today is the 12th day of August 2019. It's just after 9:00 a.m. And we will begin with our time for public comments. Anybody have a question or a comment or a request on a non-agenda item? This is your opportunity. All right, we will move to item number two and that is to consider and possibly approve minutes from our last meeting of the month of July. That was the 22nd.
Make that motion.
Motion is made to approve that set of minutes by Commissioner Applewhite. And a second comes from Commissioner Parker. All those in favor say aye. Item number three is one of these rare treats that we get from time to time and we have Steve Austin here who I'm going to let lead on a very special Bronze Star presentation. And we've got three guests with us today. And Steve, if you'll introduce your guests at the appropriate time and remind us of the importance and the meaning of the Bronze Star presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you Judge Commissioners. Today we're presenting a posthumous Bronze Star award of merit to Private Gerard F. Rogers on behalf of his surviving spouse, Mary L. Rogers, who is in attendance. There are three generations of the family. Ms. Rogers, would you like to introduce your family?
My daughter, Joyce Simley, and her granddaughter, Carol Rose Thompson.
Thank you. Take a look at this. This is a certificate of recognition. Gerard F. Rogers, in recognition of your service during the period of the Cold War, the 2nd of September 1945 to 26th of December 1991, in promoting peace and stability for this nation. The people of this nation are forever grateful. And this other side says, "The United States of America to all who shall see these present presents greeting to this to certify that the President of the United States of America, authorized by executive order on the 24th of August 1962, has awarded the Bronze Star Medal to Private Gerard F. Rogers, Company E., 2nd Battalion, 71st Infantry Regiment, for meritorious achievement in active ground combat against the enemy on 25 April 1945 while serving with 44th Infantry Division in Central Europe. Private Rogers' exemplary performance of duty in active ground combat was in keeping with the finest traditions of military service and reflects great credit upon himself, his unit, and the Army of the United States, given under my hand in the city of Washington the 24th day of July 2018." Fantastic. And then we have here the actual medal itself.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
What else can you tell us Steve? Or what else would you like to tell us?
Just for information purposes, the Bronze Star Medal is of course the fourth in precedence behind the Medal of Honor, the Distinguished Service Cross, Silver Star, and then Bronze Star, followed by the Purple Heart. This particular award of the Bronze Star is a result of General Omar Bradley's efforts following World War II in recognizing that in World War II in fighting Nazi Germany and Japan, ground forces, especially the United States Army Infantry, came into direct conflict with the enemy forces which brought to bear any aircraft weapons on a personal level rather than firing at airplanes some 20,000 feet in the air. They were brought down to horizontal ground level, in-your-face combat. So, ground troops were having to go against any aircraft weapons with small arms fire. That in itself is an act of bravery and courage above and beyond. And all those individuals who were granted and awarded the Combat Infantryman Badge or the Combat Medic Badge were allowed to apply for and receive a citation and orders for the Bronze Star Medal. And as a result of that program, when I became involved in Ms. Rogers' case, I saw on the military record of Mr. Rogers that he had indeed been qualified for this, so we made the application. It took a little while to get the medal made, but pursuant to that, we received it and scheduled this presentation. Again, it's a posthumous award and we invite Mrs. Rogers and her family to come forward for appropriate presentation.
Very good. On behalf of the Titus County Commissioners Court, you've heard what's been read. We have this paper copy. We have the actual medal itself here. We would like to present this to you from the Titus County Commissioners Court and we thank you for the service that your husband gave to this great country and we just pray that this will be a meaningful keepsake for you. Now let's get your daughter and granddaughter to come on up. Where are you all? You're close. Thank you for coming, young lady. Oh, it's nice and cool up there, isn't it? I wish it was cool here. Congratulations. Thank you very much for coming and we just appreciate your service. Y'all are welcome to stay and watch if you want to make an interest here for you and don't feel embarrassed if you want to walk out. Thank you again for coming. Steve, thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Brian, check that, see if it's working. Okay.
Item number four is a presentation by Chief Larry McCray regarding the joint city-county proposed purchase of a new fire engine with possible action to follow. We had a similar conversation here. How many years has it been, Chief?
It was 2014, I believe.
2014, so five years ago and it's time to consider another major purchase. Before I turn it over to you, let me recognize a guest here in the audience, Mr. Thatcher. If you'd stand and just let everybody see you, this is Mr. Ed Thatcher. He is coming today just to participate with us and I just wanted you all to meet. This is our interim city manager for the city of Mount Pleasant and they've pulled him out of the fields to come out of retirement for what we hope will be a brief stay. But we appreciate you coming to town and helping these guys out during the budget term and anything that any of us can do, we extend a hand.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thatcher. Chief?
As you said, in 2014, the city and county went together and purchased an engine to replace one that was owned by the city at that time. The contract actually between the city and the county says the city will furnish their equipment and the county will furnish theirs. But in 2014, like I said, we approached y'all to help with the cost and again, spread the cost between the city and the county. The engines are used in the city and the county. We're used to, years ago, we were at one station, we would take the city equipment to go to the city calls and the county equipment to go to the county calls. But in this day and time, we have two stations. If the county's engine is in, say, the north substation and we have a fire out around the college, it would not be prudent for us to take the engine from Station Two and drive right past Station One going to the call. So, the engines are used no matter where the call is, whichever one's closest is the one that's going to go to it. And again, it's, you know, in advantage to the city and the county where it helps, you know, offset the cost, nobody's having to foot the whole bill. And the one thing I will say, right now, we're in budget process just like y'all are. It's not a done deal that the city's going to budget money yet. We're still in that process, but we just wanted to make y'all aware that there is a possibility that the city will be budgeting for the engine and give y'all the opportunity to do the same thing we did in 2014.
Historically, back prior to 2014, how far back was it? At one time, you were buying a complete engine, then the county purchased a complete engine, and then was it '14 that we decided, you know, these things are getting so expensive, maybe going forward?
Yes, sir.
We just split the cost and we don't designate this a county or a city engine?
This one is actually a 2003 model. The one we replaced in 2014 was 2002. City owned the 2002, county owns the 2003. And so, when it came time in 2014, that's when we approached the county about splitting the cost. Again, our operation had changed as well because we're operating out of two stations now.
How many engines exist right now?
There's two frontline and one reserve.
Okay. And how old is that reserve unit?
It's the 2002.
2002.
And kind of what we're looking at doing, if we get this new engine, is pushing this engine, it's replacing down to the reserve and taking the one that's in a reserve right now and make it into a blocking engine that a lot of departments are using, like on the interstate. The value of that engine, if we tried to sell it, would be just a few thousand dollars. And we can take this engine to the interstate, to the highways, where right now, we use one of the first-line engines to block the scene so that if somebody's going to hit something, it's going to be that engine instead of us. So, there is a program. The Metroplex has started using it quite extensively where they take their older apparatus, convert it into a blocking engine with some signage and lights and striping and stuff like that to protect the scene on the interstates and not use the brand-new, the 100, you know, four, five, $600,000 trucks to be the ones that get hit. And quite frankly, on the interstate, we have had some really close calls. We've been sideswiped once and we've scattered numerous times because of the traffic that's out there. It's just a very dangerous place to work.
So, and I don't remember what we spent. It was nearly half a million dollars five years ago, wasn't it?
Pretty close. And we didn't get all the equipment on the engine. This one is completely outfitted so we can put it in its place, move the one that's right now that's in reserve or that this one's replacing, push it to reserve, and we'll have all the equipment on it. We're like right now, the reserve, we have to, one engine goes down, we have to take, swap the stuff and stick it over on the other truck. And so, this is a completely outfitted engine.
Your guesstimates at this point, I'm assuming would be at that upper end of what you were mentioning, 600,000?
Yes, sir. That's the quote we've got right now. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, I at least want to keep, make you aware of this. You remember what we've done in the past. The city's not made any budgetary decisions on whether or not to buy this, but as we're pulling our budget numbers together, I want you to keep this on the forefront, knowing that there may be 300,000 or slightly over expenditure that we would be asked to participate with. So, I'm going to suggest, any discussion is certainly fine at this point, but maybe we table this until the city is a little further in their decision-making. But if any of you has a question or a comment, this is a good time.
I've got a big comment. We give the city a contract, we have $391,000. This is a year ago, about a year ago. We increased it to $800,000 a year. Now, 800,000 plus, we give them to assist our volunteer fire department. Now, and then we give them, each volunteer fire department gets about 20,000 a year in their budget. So, we've got this much to us. Other counties have started a county fire department. And considering this amount of money, it's about 12% of our budget, I think we would be better off to consider our own, especially if we're going to buy another truck and to spend more money. We're spending over a billion dollars a year to the city's fire department. And so, I think we're being very foolish to just keep pouring money into the city. So, I disagree that we should pay for half of an engine so they can have an extra engine. And I know, I know the last time the fireman loaded the lock, we had it full of firemen. I heard the comment out the door when I left, that I hope his house don't catch on fire. Somebody said it, one of the fire people that was here, so I know I'm taking a chance. Probably my house will get burned now, making these statements, not agreeing with Chief McCray.
I take exception to that, sir.
I'm sorry.
I said, I take exception to that.
Well, I take exception to whatever they said about me too, okay?
Well, it's a complicated subject, no doubt about it. It's an expensive subject. It is something, yes, other counties have chosen to split away from the city. Some have fire districts, some have emergency services districts. There's any number of ways to take care of this. I certainly don't have the magic answer. I don't think that Chief McCray has the magic answer, but he knows what it costs to run a department and he knows what he has to have in the way of staffing to take care of not only the city but the county as well. And so, he comes today just telling you about an equipment need. But we will certainly have a much longer discussion about this at some point, but there's no point in holding off on this particular matter once it was brought to my attention. You at least need to know what Chief is going to be asking for possibly this year. Again, we'll wait and see what the city does. Any comments or questions for Chief McCray while he's here? Thank you very much. We appreciate what you do for us and although it's a lot of money, we understand stuff like this is needed. All right, let's table this. I'll ask you if you would like to do that or if you have any other decision today that you would like to make. This is an action item.
Make a motion, we table.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to table item number five, or excuse me, item number four regarding the possible purchase jointly with the city of a new fire engine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is a motion.
The motion is to table this matter until future?
Item number four.
Item number four.
Okay.
Okay, item number five, consider and possibly approve a loan to Cookeville Fire Department in the amount of $5,805.73 representing their portion of the grant requirement. We're going to have a little more discussion after this one as well, an item that they would like to bring to our attention, but let's take care of this one first. During the budget process, we learned about a request of $5,800 to help out with the Cookeville Fire Department's contribution on a grant for some miscellaneous equipment. And during that budget discussion, it was indicated by this court that you felt it was more appropriate to make a loan to the department rather than an outright payment to them, which is in keeping with how we have treated similar requests from other departments in the past. And you all mentioned that you would be willing to consider a loan of this amount to be paid back under favorable, I believe, no-interest terms. So, any comments, questions about that? Then I'll ask the chief or anyone else.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure. Can you pull that mic up there a little closer?
Has the grant actually been approved? I mean, is it a done deal? The grant is approved now?
We'll let.
It is, okay. But you have to pay your portion, yes, you want to pay. Now, what I would suggest we get is a copy of the dollar check to back it up. Then if you approve the loan, then you need to tell me how much you want them to pay each month on the loan. I think in the past, we worked, we just backed it out of the checks we gave them, the loan amount.
Did we do it over four years, something like that?
I don't think that's what we did it over.
All right. Let's do it under the same terms. I would suggest the same terms as the last similar payment that we made, once we're provided with that documentation. And as I recall, that was a no-interest loan.
Yes.
Okay. Chief McCullough, what would you like? If you can come on up.
It's probably going to be about $300 a month. Judge, we appreciate it and that's gracious and at a 0% interest rate, we appreciate that. But we're going to deny this at this point because we've worked some things in different directions and we're going to make it work out. $300 a month would be pretty tough for us to pull off, make the rest of what we need to pay during the year and anything that comes up in between. If we don't have something set back, we could get ourselves in a pretty good bind. So, we've made other arrangements on that end of it, but we do appreciate the court allowing us the opportunity to do that.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll take no action on this and should this subject need to come back again, I think we'll still reconsider if you see that your plans don't go the way that you had hoped. I know that you have a subject that you would like to discuss and so, at this time, I understand you've got an issue with a previously owned truck. You brought me a memo here. I'm going to turn it over to you, let you make this presentation. This is not an action item. If the court feels like they want to put this on the next agenda, I certainly will. But if you need to read this or I need to read this, you can kind of tell us what the situation is.
That was more just kind of an overview of what's happened in the past year or so with Argo and Cookeville in the way that that all had played out. What really the issue is, there's a brush truck that Mike Logan, he doesn't have the ability, y'all have taken it and said that that was going to go to the Commissioners Court or to the Commissioners for a dump truck. And he doesn't have the authority to say, hey, we're going to sign it back over to Cookeville. We do have two trucks, two brush trucks. When Mike and I talked about the split between Cookeville and Argo, that was the one truck that we were wanting back because 57 is a test truck from FEMA or from, yeah, well, from TFS. It's a DOD truck. It's a big, it's a huge truck. It has had its share of issues at this point. It was a used truck. It does have a real good skid unit on the back end of it and a great tank and it'll do things that the regular brush trucks won't do. But it also, if it holds up to the core matter of actually being able to fight fires, it's another story all the way around. We're still in the middle of testing it. At this point, it's split the front end, has split on it in three different places around where the timing chain cover is at. It's split in three different places. We patched it. It's not running oil out of it like it was, so we're able to use it at this point until it starts dumping oil again. The other brush truck has a fiberglass tank on it. That tank's been on there since, I don't even remember where that tank came from. This is an old, old tank and it's rotten. We spent $1,800 on having it fixed, I guess about two years ago when Argo had come across and told us that we had a leaking tank. We sent it off and sent 53 over there so that they wouldn't be without a brush truck being there. We had it sent off and we thought it was fixed, but the gentleman who had fixed it, he also said there was no guarantees because he couldn't guarantee something as old as that fiberglass tank that was on there. So, needless to say, the...
Do you mind if I read this?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
This is worded pretty well. I think it'll help them maybe understand the situation. Request from Cookeville Volunteer Fire Department for a return of brush truck number 51 to service for the Cookeville Volunteer Fire Department. Background, Cookeville loaned brush truck 51 to the new Argo Volunteer Fire Department in a handshake agreement. Says you loaned it. Until Argo receives its new $35,000 truck from the county. At this time, Cookeville needs number 51 back because its other trucks are down for service and 51 is needed to protect the community. Chief Logan of Argo says the truck will not be returned to Cookeville because he has made an agreement with the Commissioners to give the truck to the county. Mike thinks he has no choice. We are here today to ask the Commissioners to give Mike Logan the authority to transfer the truck back to Cookeville. The Cookeville Department continues to support Argo and its successful transition from a substation of Cookeville to its standalone status. This support has been evidenced in the funding and manpower supplied by Cookeville in the construction of the Argo station. $48,000 itemized and the gifts of substantial fire protection equipment plus three trucks to the new station, being engine 50, tanker 56, and brush truck 53. Brush truck 51, the subject of this, on the other hand, was loaned, not given. At this time, Cookeville needs truck number 51 returned in order to protect our community.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who is that truck titled to right now? Is it still titled to?
We signed over the title to Argo.
Why would you do that in a loan?
Looking back on it, it was an error, but we just, it was in good faith and understanding that to us, for them to have it and insure it and all the rest of it, we swapped it over in that direction. We thought it was the best legal procedure.
When was that done? How long ago?
When Argo became its own volunteer fire department. Was it been a year ago?
Year, roughly. Okay. Okay. So, a truck that the title has transferred over and is now actually in the name of Argo, we're saying, oops, mistake, that was a loan, we need our truck back.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, well, I'll let these guys tell me what they want to do about this. I don't know all the facts. I've heard your side. I haven't talked to the Argo Department. I haven't talked to anybody here among these Commissioners to know what intended use there might be for this truck within the county, but let these guys research this.
53 will come up. I mean, y'all budgeted for a brush truck this year and then a tanker, I believe, also. Is that correct? For a tanker, is budgeted also? Is that incorrect?
Okay.
For June 17th meeting?
I don't know my terminology for fire equipment. I'm sorry. I don't know about a tanker versus a brush truck.
But I guess 53 is going to, is not going to have a home because they only have so many bays at Argo. They have four bays and if they get two other trucks and they're going to have one truck that's going to, actually, they'll have two trucks if 51 stays there and 53 stays there. There's going to be two trucks that come up, sitting out, you know, for the county or whatever.
All right. Let us look into this, would you? Come in. All right. That... That, let's see, what else is on there? All right. We took no action on item number five because Chief McCollum says they've made other financial arrangements. I would suggest that we just take no action on this, and if they choose to bring this back up at a later time, we'll reconsider it then. Item number six, consider and possibly approve upgrading the video surveillance system at the Justice Center at a cost of $9,100 to be paid out of the security fund. I've got all kinds of experts here. I've got Paul Lindsey.
Certainly, I'm not an expert in this.
I've got Dennis. I've got Chris. Man, we're loaded up.
Loaded up. This system that they're asking for, Chris had came and talked to me about this. It's replacing the current system that they have. The system that was put in at the Justice Center was put in in 2011. So, they're almost nine years old, or they may be actually nine years old. The DVR has pretty much run its life, or end-of-life status. And so, what we've asked Dennis to do is to look at the camera system and give us a good idea of how we'd like to upgrade the system. Eventually, probably all the systems around here, including the one in the courthouse and the annex, will probably need some sort of updating. But right now, what we're asking for is what we can get for the Justice Center. And I'm going to let Dennis come up here if he will, and he can explain the difference to you about why he's putting it now as opposed to what we already have and the age of it.
Welcome, Dennis.
Good morning. As Paul said, the existing system was put in back in August of 2011 with nine cameras, and we're, five of them are outside and four of them on the inside. Those cameras are still the original ones that were put in, except for two of them. One of them was replaced in 2015, and the other was replaced in 2017 due to storm damage or equipment failure or whatever. And then there was another camera on the inside that was replaced in 2017 also. All those existing cameras are about half a megapixel, which is about 600 lines of resolution, which was, at the time, the best camera you could get at that time. Technology's changed, so until now, we can put in five-megapixel cameras, which are, which will complement this DVR. We're changing out the DVR because that company, Toshiba, built those units. And in December 31st of 2017, they announced they were pulling out of the surveillance industry. Japanese owner company decided they wanted to get out of the surveillance business totally. So, we have lost support of any of those products. There was a company, some of the employees went to work, started their own company, and those parts have played out. We've had one in a school district that failed about three months ago due to a storm, and we realize that the parts are no longer available for those units. And so, that would be the primary reason for replacing that unit. It's just served out its lifetime. We have replaced hard drives for those units, and that's a serviceable item we do under the maintenance contract. But the unit as a whole is nearing extinction, so we feel like it would be a good time to replace it. We're adding four more cameras at the request of both the JPs. They found that they have some, we only have nine cameras. Like I say, we only have four on the inside, and four is just not enough to cover the area with the, there is a metal detector like y'all have outside, and some incidents happen where people were behind those, and so they obscured the view of the camera, and they weren't able to see clearly enough. So, we're adding some cameras to cover those blind spots there. And also, on the outside, there's a couple of spots that they want to get better visibility. So, these cameras are, I guess you could say, better than, five times better than the ones they have now, just far as clarity and visibility, the ability to see things at a distance as well as close up.
Total number of cameras inside and out that you're proposing would be what?
We'd add four more, so it'd be 13 cameras total.
In and out, how many?
Both, I mean, yeah.
What's the mix?
We'd add two more outside and two more inside. So, right now, they have five on the outside. They'd bring that total to seven outside, and four on the inside, and make it six on the inside. And the DVR, the server, is capability of 16 cameras, so that would leave them three spots if they found something they needed, you know, in years to come or whatever. But they feel 13's adequate to cover the area.
Is that one noticeably inferior to other systems that we've got going in the other courthouses?
It's, that system is about, it's comparable to the ones like here in the courthouse, the annex. They were all put in about the same time. Some of those cameras have been replaced, like I said, due to, you know, failure. They're a little bit better than the original, just because technology improved through the years. These cameras would give them, like I said, just a vast improvement over what they have now.
What, how much time can you record now, and how much time can you record with the new system?
That unit over there, these gets about two months, a little over two months is the time that it's archived in the video. This system would probably increase that just because we're including nine terabyte hard drive. So, that would increase it probably about three months. It's hard to determine. It depends on how much motion, because we set the cameras on motion, and during busier days, they get more recording, and so it lessens the time. But on an average, they're going to get somewhere around three to four months of archived video, which is usually adequate to go back. Any incident that occurred is usually found out, and they need to investigate it. Well, usually, that's enough time to go back and find whatever happened.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Chris, any comments? Why do you think we need this?
The only thing I would add was the clarity on the videos are horrible. If you have an incident, if somebody comes out of the courtroom and a fight starts in a parking lot, well, you know who it was because they just left the courtroom, so we can kind of make out who it is. But if something happens out there outside of, in the parking lot, you can't make them out. I mean, you can see it happen. You can kind of get a general description, but there's no way to determine who that person is. We had a hit-and-run, it's been two, three months ago in a parking lot. And we could kind of see it was a minivan, maybe green, gray, light blue. And they pulled in a perfect position where the license plate was picked up, but the video quality was so poor that we really couldn't make it out. I think we had a guy vandalize the Justice Center a few years back, and the same thing. Could see it was a pickup. He pulled where the license plate was visible, but you can't make the plate out. I think it would just be a, it's not a preventative thing, but it's going to help you solve a crime or something that's happened. You know, so that's the only thing I'd like to add. There are some spaces that are hidden behind certain things that need to be covered. That's all I have to add.
Paul, can we pay for this out of the security fund?
Well, I checked. It's got about $37,000 in it. Right? Yes.
But it's eligible?
Oh, yes. Yes, because I'm there.
All right. Anything else? Commissioners, any questions, concerns?
I went over and looked at the cameras, and they're real milky. It's a little strange, the view of them. And we looked about, trying to change pixels and cutting a few cameras to try to get it more power. There's just nothing you can do. So, they are poor quality. And we're going to put one outside on that south side of the building, which also helped kind of project towards Election Center, and cover the parking lot and that whole side of the building better. I like that idea for that camera there, so I think it'd be a good upgrade. I look like I weighed about 400 pounds in them cameras over there. I didn't like that. So, we're going to go more opaque. We're going to get some skinny cameras over there, and look like a 400-pound ghost or something.
Judge, I have to add to that all of the new cameras, the existing cameras, the outside cameras, some of those don't have infrared lenses just because of the fact that they weren't available for that future time, say, and all of these replacement cameras do that. So, they give you better clarity on that. I mean, they have the nasty, like, brown on the building, and that.
So, this will show that John weighs 400 pounds in, right?
Even at night.
Well, if we're going to do anything, we need to start with a motion.
Make a motion, we pay it out of the security fund.
Commissioner Fitch says, yes, let's do this project. Let's spend $9,100 and upgrade the DVR and the cameras at the Justice Center. Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor of this purchase, say aye. Opposed? All right. Thanks, everyone. All right. We'll go to another. So, we've got subject matter all over the board today. Let's go to number seven, discuss and possibly take action on some optional services that we can purchase related to our county health insurance, such as Affordable Care Act reporting, benefits in hand, and EDI. This subject matter was discussed extensively with Higginbotham and our Auditor's Department. We got a little taste of it during the last meeting that we had with Higginbotham. But apparently, there are quite a few things that can be, if we so choose, be relieved of the Auditor's Office to help us with governmental reporting. And I'm going to let Carl and/or Nanette give you some further explanation on this.
We had a meeting last week, maybe week before last. We had the meeting and went over the different things, the way we're having to implement the information, 1095 reporting, all the Obamacare reporting. It's still there. Even though the penalties are gone, we're still going to be required to do all the reporting, issue the 1095 forms to everybody, show what insurance they had, which ones they had. This just streamlines that quite a bit, makes it a lot easier on sharing.
Who actually provides this service?
Well, I'll let Nanette go into the details of how exactly you want to do that.
Can I get you in front of a microphone, either up there at the podium, or pass that down to her? There will be some people interested in watching this explanation. And each of us have a copy of this, if you want to kind of go through this?
Benefits in Hand is a system that is used to administer your healthcare benefits because we're self-insured. We have to enter information into the system and set the employees up with UMR and Guardian. So, in order to do that and not have to enter data twice, we enter them into Benefits in Hand. And then now, there is a process, which is item number four, called EDI, that communicates with Benefits in Hand and does all of the updating of the benefits. So, instead of having to enter information in two different systems, it's entered into one. Benefits in Hand, the software is provided with our contract with Higginbotham, which is a $500 fee to use that system. That's provided at no cost to the county. However, the cost related to producing the 1095s and the regulatory requirement that is sent into the federal government, the 1095 information, has to go from Benefits in Hand to a third-party organization, which charges $500 for that transaction. Then, once they get them, they charge $3.50 per individual that we send the 1095 to, which we've estimated, based on our numbers, around $525. It could go $600. It just depends on how many people we have in and out. And remember, it's not how many employees we have employed, it's how many people we've had in our benefit system throughout the year. So, if someone comes on in January and leave us, and there's still a count for this. So, that's kind of a moving number. The EDI connection is $250 per connection. We have a connection with UMR and a connection with Guardian. So, our estimated cost to fully comply with the 1095 is seven, we've estimated it to be about $1,700.
Okay.
Any questions?
We're prepared to have, of course, still $100, we're prepared to have insurance fund, we give the funds, we provide the party, employees, and customers, with their spouses, and also, not them.
Okay. So, this improves accuracy and reduces some labor load on your department?
Well, it moves us forward with more of a enrollment base that is electronic. Because of enrollment, employees can go in. They can log into Benefits in Hand and input all of their information, which totally takes that transaction out of the Auditor's Office. Right now, we do them all.
Okay. This is going to give us that ability to do self-enrollment?
For to do self-enrollment, like you'll get an email in your email that says your benefits are up for renewal. Log into Benefits in Hand. You can make changes, or you can check a box that says, I don't want to make any changes, so you don't have to use the forms. It also integrates that system for them to send out emails and people to be able to do that function as well.
Okay. So, we ought to do this?
We have to do it especially this year to get the 1095s done. It's our only mechanism in place right now to complete that. If you remember, if the court remembers some questions we had about some billing discussion early on in the year related to our insurance was this. That's why Higginbotham wanted to make sure we understood the cost involved in doing the 1095 reporting. But we get that extra benefit of Benefits in Hand for the enrollment as well.
Okay. You said we have to do it. Really, this is optional, but we don't really have to do it? But it is optional?
Well, in order for us to produce 1095s through our system this year, we're going to have to use a third-party service. In order to use the third-party service, we have to have the EDI upload, because every time someone has entered into the system, they feed it in there, and then they have the data to go to the third-party for the 1095. That's really the main movement for this right now.
Okay.
So, we will have part of this, 250 will be probably set up within, before the end of this year for the first EDI connection. It won't be next year. It'll be this year.
Okay. All right.
Because I think it's the 12th, wasn't it?
Did you all thoroughly understand that and are ready to make a motion? Sounds like $1,700 additional?
The $7,200 additional?
$1,700 annually cost of these items here.
How will you, I think I answered my question. I said, how will you transmit this information? But I see that we're connected with both those topics.
That EDI connection does. And we only have till September the 12th to get it set up for this year. That's why I was saying, we'll have to do it for this year, you know? But that would be in the current year. There, I think it's September the 12th was the cutoff to get the EDI set up for the current year reporting.
Weren't we already spending $500 for?
We spent more than that last year.
Okay. So, it's not really a net increase of $1,700, $1,200?
Well, I don't know if it was considered last year because the prior year, they were done manually. So, I don't know if these, that was part of the issue we had with getting the approval to do.
Yeah, I think last year, Higginbotham said they would pay the 500 if we would pay the 500 for the reporting tool, so that...
And I think that's where the 500 for the reporting, that we had to pay the third-party in February, that's where those two got confused. And that's why Tony wanted to make sure they were broke apart. We're giving you the 500 for the software. You're still responsible for the processing fees with the third.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion of whatever you want to do.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Riddle makes a motion to approve these expenditures. Commissioner Riddle makes a motion to approve these expenditures in order to better handle Obamacare reporting.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number eight, Pam Holmes is here to tell us about ordering a special election for November 5th of this year. Welcome, Pam, our Elections Administrator.
Judge, Commissioners, I am just here today to petition your signature on the order of special election that the governor has sent. And the election that the governor has ordered is to adopt or reject the proposed constitutional amendments that's submitted by the 86th Legislature Regular Session of the State of Texas. And so you guys have commissioned me to see that elections are carried out in the county, and so I'm just here to petition your signatures.
Okay. What, do you have any idea at this point, how many we'll be voting on?
There are 10.
10?
10 amendments.
Okay. And any other special elections going to occur on that same day?
I have not received an order of election from the city, but I do believe it will be a joint election with the city. They have a position that's open and needs to be filled.
So we can combine those and not have to have two separate elections?
We can. Also, while I'm here, I just ought to go ahead and ask, does the court, if the court needs to consider combining any boxes, are we gonna have all of our precincts open for this? So maybe it's something that y'all can consider and discuss.
Can you give us any historical data on what we've done in the past with similar elections that?
I cannot write at this moment, but I can get that for you. Yep.
Well, I think this court would like to be efficient with that, if you can make a suggestion. Or does anybody remember negative comments in the past when we've had reduced numbers of boxes on these types of elections? Maybe you could tell us how many voted in that last election four years ago and?
And which boxes were open?
Maybe make suggestions to us.
Okay, I can sure do that. Okay. I do know that all of the city boxes will have to be open. We cannot combine them.
Okay. All right, so you need us to approve the order of special election. So I'll entertain a motion when someone is ready.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's made to approve this order by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, you need our signature right now?
I will leave this with you, and then if I could get?
Why don't you just pass it down?
To, okay.
Tell you what, leave it with us, let us run it through all the official channels and make our copies, and we'll get it back to you.
Yes, I need it to be posted on the Commissioners Bulletin Board, their original, and then I will have a copy.
On the Commissioners Bulletin Board downstairs in the courthouse? Where, okay.
Where?
With our public, with our public notices? You talking about just our public notices bulletin board? Okay, we'll do that. Now, again, other than giving her signatures, can we give it back to her, or do we want to make copies and do it? Yeah, just leave it with us, Pam.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we'll get it back to you. Item number nine, consider and possibly approve an agreement with the City of Mount Pleasant to waive the payment of services that are provided by each entity to the opposing entity, not opposing, that's not a good word. This is related to city prisoners that the county houses, and we receive a fee from the city, and then animal control services that we just voted on here recently. And those services provided by the city, and the county pays for them. So you're proposing that instead of us trading checks, we just call it a wash?
Right.
And forget about the check writing?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll let you explain anything else you would like.
Well, not a lot to explain on it. We were just swapping paperwork back and forth, and so I just, I had got Commissioner Fitch, talked to him about it, and I can't remember if it was Al or Dana, I'd mentioned it to him. Everybody kind of liked the idea, so I brought it to you guys during our budget meeting. And so everybody liked the idea, and so I went and pitched it to Eddie Parrott, and I believe he spoke to some of the council people, and they liked the idea. So here it is, we got it done. And I think it's a good deal for both of us.
And this will need to be approved at the city as well?
They already have.
They already have?
They've already approved it through their commissioner, I mean, through their courts, their city council, when they had, when they held their court, or their meetings, and yeah, ultimately liked it, just our signatures here.
Okay. And Mr. Thatcher, I don't know if you know anything about this sub, you may know all about it, but is there any question that you've got here?
No, we, yeah, we looked at it, I said, we just noted that we were gonna review it each year, make sure that it was even signed. We're gonna present the budget workshop this Thursday with the council.
Okay. Okay. And the dollar amounts were roughly the same, and that's why you decided?
Yes, sir.
Why should we just?
Yeah, and I think it's just good, because it's just us working together. And I think it's, I think it's good for both sides, because we were swapping money, I was gonna save paperwork, and it's the city helping the county, and the county helping the city. So I believe it's a good deal for both of us, and it'll save some paperwork on the Auditor's Office. And everybody liked it, so here we are. And everybody's approved it, so you guys liked it when we talked about it at our budget meeting. And now I guess Eddie, is Eddie still the interim city manager also, or there?
No.
Okay, so you are, okay. But anyway, yeah, but now, I don't believe you quite committed to Eddie, pitched this to him, correct? But I don't, I don't believe you were there at the time that we first brought this to him, or was you there?
Yeah, no, we talked about it the other day.
Okay, so you're, okay.
If there's, you know, let them, if they haven't already made it official, they can make it official at the appropriate time. We'll just speak for ourselves at this time with this motion.
Okay, yeah, but, yeah, but the city has already approved it.
Okay, all right. All right, need a motion then, guys, if you want to do this.
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch to approve this agreement with the city to waive the payment of services provided by each entity for housing city prisoners and taking care of county animals. All, I needed a second. Second, Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
There's not an official place that you can sign it. I can get you up to sign it real quick, so we can, and we'll need a copy of this, I can take the copy back.
Sure.
Well, I can either give it to this gentleman here, Darlene, would you want to take it back? Okay.
There's not a place that all of you can sign, just you were here.
You have just one copy there, so after we sign it, we'll make a copy.
We might come with you to, so we take that to the city.
All right, thank you. We're gonna make a copy here real quick, and we'll give you one while you wait, if you'd like.
Okay, while y'all are taking care of that, we'll let the Commissioner start telling you about current roadwork going on in each precinct. Commissioner Riddle, I'll start with precinct one.
We're in the process, or we have just about completed getting ready to seal coat 1680, and then, and some more smaller spots, and just been patching holes and trying to keep our head above water, and having trouble with our mower for our mowing, and got a little, we got behind, it's been in the shop several times. But anyway, that's about it, just everyday business.
When's the next seal coat work in precinct one?
1680 is the main one, and we'll do that.
This month, you think?
Oh, yeah, this week, probably. And there's another couple, some smaller spots that we don't have ready. We have that part ready, about seven tenths of a mile. But there's some more, we'll get some more in before the end of the year.
All right.
Or the end of the month, probably.
Have we started seal coating any of the other precincts yet?
We don't have the equipment.
Let me rotate, I just do some of his, just real quick.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, what?
We had, I said, he's been seal coating, and we've been preparing.
That, I don't understand.
I said, you was preparing, you was getting ready for seal coating, we're gonna prepare, we're preparing our roads till they get through the seal coat, and he gets through, then somebody else is gonna do it. But it mostly takes up?
Just do seal coating one place at a time?
Yes, sir, it does, it's gonna take seal coating one time, place at a time.
Wait a minute, let's be perfectly clear, that equipment's been sitting around, and you didn't get the roads prepared because you're needing equipment, is that what you're saying?
No, sir, I said, we're gonna, when you get your seal coating stuff, then we'll get the rest, we're gonna start going domino effect. I'm just saying that, you know, when, I know you're seal coating, we're preparing roads, so is John and Jimmy, but when we're gonna, after you get it, we're gonna get, like, John get it, or Jimmy, or whatever. I'm not insinuating, I'm just saying, it takes progress, because we got, it's a little at a time.
In other words, you don't need the equipment to get your roads prepared.
I've got mine prepared, I just gotta get the seal, just go get the emulsion, but we gotta wait for the water truck to get back, because it's supposed to be back today or tomorrow.
Well, it sounded like, though, the reason you not have it ready, because we were using the equipment, and that's not the fact at all.
You've been dragging your feet?
No, we, that equipment's been sitting. I've been wondering why we, you know, we need to use it more, as much as it costs.
We've, we've tore, like, John.
I know you've got a lot of it ready, yeah.
Right.
I'm familiar with yours.
Yeah, we're trying to get everything.
All right, precinct two?
All right, we're gonna finish up some mowing today for the precinct and start on a second round. Last week, we had a rock hit the back window in the tractor, so I had to get a new back window replaced. And we repaired some soft spots on some roads we're getting ready to chip seal on 2,400 and on 2,710, 2,720, 2,715, and 4,550. And we cleaned several ditches on 23, 25, 2,300, 2,430, 1220, and 1240. We put in a culvert for driveway on 2,300. Sprayed some bridges and some culverts, and we had to go out after a storm, previous storm, there was still a tree that, I don't think it got a little bit worse, and, let's see what road that was, 1220 and 1150, and we cut those trees up and hauled them off. So we're getting some roads ready for chip sealing pretty soon. And my motor grader blew a seal in the front of it, and we've ordered all the seals for, hopefully we'll get that fixed this week. That's the equipment I need to get ready for some chip sealing. So hope I can get it all knocked out.
Pretty quick.
And get to chipping.
Precinct three?
Yes, we got, so we got four roads prepared right now to, we're gonna, it's gonna do the emulsion on them, just spray them to get ready. We'll have them first thing next year to seal coat 3920, 1820, 1910, and 1925. And we're, right now, we're on 3265, we got it prepared, we put a culvert in to seal coat that road for about two miles, and in 3350, where they, the engineer had prepared it, we're gonna go start on it, doing, getting the soft spots out of it. And we've got the mowing done for our first round now, we're gonna start spraying some mailboxes and some culverts and some bridges. And till we get the water truck, you know, we, it's gonna take a lot of water, it'll take at least two water trucks to put that emulsion down. And, because you gotta have water there on hand, because it's pre-mixed with water. And so we get those four roads, you know, that'll get them prepared for next year, and then, like I said, we get these 3265 and 3350, we get them prepared to chip seal this year, it's about four or five miles. Then we're gonna start around from Mount Silvian, 3270, all the way around to tearing up to Argo Church over there, that whole, about five and a half miles, we're gonna start on it sometime, and then we get this other stuff, seal coated and coated. So we'll be able to put that coat on till, you know, anytime, like I said, it's dry, you know, keep the ground, the road dry, we can spray it, and it'll harden it up, it'll just make the asphalt.
That's with that new magic emulsion?
Yes.
Have you used any of it?
Not yet, that's what we're.
When were you first used that?
Hoping, I gotta go to Waco to pick about six tubs of it up and bring it back, and like I said, I had to get the water truck back, we have two water trucks there, all times full of water, to mix it where we can get, it'll take, it'll take a couple days, he said, to do those four roads.
Maybe next week?
Yes, sir. We gotta try it. We got, the biggest deal was just have to go to Waco, pick the totes up, me and another guy gonna pick them up and bring them back. But like I said, we got our mowing done, and we're waiting on our side cutter to get fixed, and we've been, the sheriff's been patching for us, and I appreciate him doing that. And like I said, this, we're behind, but we're getting, we're trying to catch up.
Precinct four?
We have, last week, installed two culverts on 4825 down behind Chapel Hill School, trying to get ready to seal coat it. I was wanting to get it done before school started, but we're not gonna make that, looks like it may be a little later before we can do it. We've got, they have got the culverts in now for it. We've got another one across 1735 on 4660 that we were hoping to start replacing this morning, it's a 48-inch, and they didn't have it marked, there's some fiber optics there close to it, and they didn't have it marked. And I went and pulled my computer out, checked the status on it, and somewhere or another, there was something didn't get put in for the details, so I had to re-submit it this morning, and hopefully they'll get it ready for us to do today or tomorrow. And we worked on 3155, got all the ditches pulled, got two culverts to put in over there, and should have them in by the end of this week, and if Al and them are through with the reclamer, we're gonna get it and start tearing the road up and get it ready to seal coat then. It should be ready, probably, and we're gonna use the stabilizer on it, that, from Waco, the way it looks, it's gonna be our best route to go with it instead of seal coating this year, get it, get the road stabilized and let it set till next year, maybe, and then seal coat it. And same way with 4315, we're gonna start it, as soon as we finish this 3155, and get it tore up, we've got, I think it's seven culverts we've got to put in on it, so it's gonna be a deal. We can go a little longer with this stabilizer than we can seal coating, so that's one reason that I'm doing that, I'm trying to, trying to get all that ready and all to do that. And we, we've been patching holes, we, I've got them out this morning, trying to get a few holes patched and all, to, there's some folks that had called in about some holes and stuff, so trying to get that taken care of, and just, like Dana said, just trying to move along.
All right. Item number 11, consider and possibly approve purchasing a new metal detector for the courthouse annex, $3,897. That includes installation, training, and shipping to be paid out of the security fund. Paul, anything we need to know about this? I know we've talked about it earlier, that price comparable to what we've spent in the past?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
When we purchased these two machines, this one and one for the Justice Center, Kennedy decided that he would keep the old machine.
Theirs was working at the time.
Well, but anyway, it interlaced. Well, but anyway, it interlasted for quite a year and a half, maybe. We've had these for a while. And the machine they got over there now is not working very well at all. There's a lot of features that these machines have that the old machines don't. These machines, when you walk through them, will tell you which side the metal's on, it'll tell you where on the body that the metal's at, it allows you to screen a lot faster. And so it's, and it's a good machine, it's the best one they got, it's that 6500, or 6500, and I think it'd be a good thing, a good enhancement for what Ken and him have over there.
Okay, out of the security fund, so that'll bring our total to about 13,000 we spent out of the security fund if we approve this one. So, commissioners, what would you like to do about approving or not approving a new metal detector for the courthouse annex? It'll be similar to the one we've got out here that's been a good, a good unit for us.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Riddle to approve the purchase of this new metal detector for the annex.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, we do this annually, I believe, don't we, Joan?
Yes.
Item number 12, we're going to open up a time for a public hearing for the Titus County Clerk's Office Records Archival Plan for fiscal year 2020. So what is your plan, Joan?
Well, my plan is, you're well-
Could I get you in front of a mic?
Okay.
Either pass it down or come on up.
Well, let me just say that the legislature, the fee was supposed to expire, the $10 fee, versus, I think, 2013, they increased it to $10, to be temporarily increased until September the 1st of 2019. The 86 legislature extended that indefinitely. So, that will give me, us more money in the future. I have the county D record volumes, 45 to 49. I didn't bring those in there because they're, they're so huge, but I also want to preserve these, some of these pre-dated Texas as an independent nation. They are called, it was always called the Republic of Texas, but these handwritten records are in terrible shape. And preservation of them will deacidify the pages as well as remove the tape that is also aging the paper and keep them from crumbling. Some of these in the back are in really bad shape. They're just like in pieces. But those, these two books are real similar, and this is when it was Red River County, I think in 1845, Texas was annexed to the United States. And in the first Congress of 1846, Titus County was formed. Of course, Morris and Franklin were part of Titus County at that time, and since then, they've been shaved off all sides. So, these are the book, these are a couple of the books, the oldest books that I'm proposing that we reclaim or preserve or restore to use.
Can't just run them through the scanner?
Huh?
Can't just run them through the scanner?
No. These are, the papers that they're on, you wouldn't want to, you have to handle them very carefully, because they're fragile.
So, what do we need to, what's part, what is the hearing process? Do we need a-
Well, just to see if the public has any questions about the money being spent, I always, I always get, you know, a couple of bids and go with the, with the company that is reputable, because if they are not preserved correctly.
One of those books costs about what?
That could, it could cost anywhere. Those books are in such bad shape, I'm saying I'm allowing $50,000, because that's their projected revenue for one year.
For two books?
So.
For two books?
Those two, well, I've got the D books, which are five D books, and those, I'm going to say about $35,000.
For how many books?
With those, it would be seven.
So about $5,000 a book?
Yes. But they sleeve them in acid-free sleeves, they remove them and they deacidify the paper, and they take all the tape off, they, they put them on rice paper if they need to be patched in any places. Because some of them have little tears and little divots to where, they're really in bad shape, but to preserve them, and then they are put in those acid-free sleeves. Those have been rebounded, probably, from the looks of them, I would say 30 to 40 years ago, they were rebounded, but they were not preserved.
So once we do this process for $5,000, I'll guarantee they'll last long as any of us? We'll let the next generation worry about that.
Carl, can they preserve you? I'm younger than I look. It costs us $5,000.
Okay. Sure? All right. Any, any public input now during this time of public hearing that we are opening up here to discuss Ms. Newman's plan for archiving and restoring some books, this archival plan for 2020?
These are, these books are, these surveys are signed by Elon Riddle, John Riddle, there's a Hamilton, there's a Wilson, they're, these are, they're signatures on these documents.
Famous, famous people.
I don't know, I guess he could, he could tell us that.
He sure perked up.
There was an Elon, and a John Riddle, and there was a Hamilton, and-
A famous gang that torched to terrorize the area. Woke him up. All right, how long would you like for me to leave this open? Are we ready to bring our hearing to a close? Janice, do you have any comments or questions here?
No, really, $5,000 would be worth it. I'd actually pay faster than-
That seems reasonable.
Than security stuff.
I like that scanner idea myself.
Well, these funds that I would be spending, I would be spending on the preservation of the books, is money that has been earmarked for only that purpose. It cannot be used for any other purpose.
Is this approval-
Like 100 years old.
Does this approval here right now continue that fee, the same fee?
No, this just approves-
Okay. The legislature controls that- Legislature controls that fee at this time?
Yes, yes, the legislature.
Security, they're writing for $5, $10, so the amount of money, and now they left at 15.
Well, if there's no other comments, then I'm going to get ready here to bring our public hearing time to a close on item number 12.
Let me say one more thing, I did publish a notice in the newspaper, two times. One on Wednesday, August the 7th, and one on Saturday, the Saturday, Sunday edition, August 10th and 11th.
Ma'am, I want to end the 11-hour segment here, but today is Monday, and it is the 12th of August, not the 13th, if you will read that paper.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll have to go check. I'll have to go check when I send them. Should we do this again?
Well, I brought in extra security today for the crowd. You tell, you tell me if you think that's a fatal error or not, I would not think so.
Well, it does say Monday.
I think it's right. Okay, anything else? I'll bring this public hearing time to a close. All right, item number 13, now that you've, we've had the hearing, we're going to consider and possibly approve an order to adopt the Titus County Clerk's Office Records Archival Plan. Let me briefly read this to you. Whereas local government code section 118.011 enables the commissioner's court to adopt a records archive fee for the preservation and restoration services performed by the clerk in connection with maintaining the clerk's archive. Whereas the court approved a collection of an archive fee of $5 in September of '03, which the clerk's office collects at the time of filing. Whereas sections 118.011 of the local code was amended to increase that amount from $5 to $10. And whereas with approval from the court, the clerk will collect that $10 when a non-court document is presented for recording or filing with said fee starting January of '14 and collected through September 19, at which time the fee will revert to $5. Whereas with approval from the commissioner's court, the county clerk will collect a records archive fee of $10 when a non-court document is presented for recording or filing to become permanent on September 1, 2019. Whereas the court approval of the clerk's records archival plan and the plan being accepted and presented is now therefore ordered by the court that pursuant to local government code, they hereby adopt the Titus County Records Archival Plan. Further, the fees collected may be expended only for the preservation and restoration of the clerk's records archive. The funds may not be used to purchase, lease, or develop computer software to geographically index public records for current recordings.
This is additional information, there's $111,800 in that fund. And she's planning on spending $35,000, I think there'll be new fees coming in during the year.
All right, well, that is what we're going to sign, should you so choose to approve today.
Make that motion.
Motion's made for approval by Commissioner Applewhite?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll need your signatures here.
It's getting Carl preserved too.
Soon as we get that here.
All right, it's time for item number 14, to approve oral and written reports of county officials.
Since we implemented that new payment system, I'll have to put those, pay all the bills.
Yeah, you've eliminated those two center columns. They're already in there, so we're looking at a pretty current column there on the far left.
That's right.
Okay, so this is, this is current as of last Thursday.
That's right. Which includes all the bills, all the proof, and we're still doing all the same process here, you're seeing all the bills and all that. A couple of things I bring to your attention, in the general fund, we've got $6.5 million in there. Remember, we got all that aluminum settlement money that we split up, so that's some of the reason we've got more money than originally budgeted to have. So, we had to spend it, so it's in there, so that's good. We're going to finish the year, we should finish the year with around $6 million general fund, maybe $5.5 million. And then if you look back on the second page, we've already collected the second payment of $4.5 million, $4.25 million from the state, and we've already paid the bond payments. So all that's in and out, and there's still around $4 million in the INS fund. And then on page three, two items, the right-of-way money for the Chapel Hill Road, there's $3.6 million in there. And we're an interest on that all the time, so hopefully that'll be enough to cover that. We don't know, when we did, when we did the Harps Bluff Road, that right-of-way cost us more than we thought it was going to cost, but, so I don't know what will come out here. But that's, that money is there, and then the fund right under it is the Loot Construction Fund, and that includes the settlement money we collected on the settlement, two, almost $2.5 million in there. End of the year, we roll that over into the INS fund, so you're going to have about $6 million in the INS fund.
You do that at the end of the year, you'll make that entry?
Yeah, I'll do it before.
Before?
I'll do it before October 1st. So far, we start the new year, I'll be in there.
Do you have an exact amount of what we got in the railroad settlement?
Lumber settlement, yeah, I've got it, I don't remember what it is, I don't say it was a million, two, maybe, is that settlement?
I was thinking a million four, but then-
So where'd I find the exact amount? Well, I've got it, I'll just have to look it up. We got, we're like, money in pursuit, so I've got-
I'd like another, what was our final net payment for the railroad bridge that was built too low?
I would say it was 925, is that right? 950, 925, nine hundred and something.
I was thinking 950, maybe, 950 is what I thought.
Yeah, we, we had the-
We came as multiple payments.
Yeah, we've already paid the tunices, all the fees, I know that we have, we owe our tunices, so that money's just left. We had about $8.5 left over for the construction, we had about 900, two, because there's $2.47 in there, so that includes interest that it's on. And that, that has to go to the INS fund, it can't go anywhere else. The bonds we used to build the platform, if you don't spend all the money, then you've got to put it in the INS, that bond's back, so it won't go over there. I'll move it there before I put it through. Yeah. Lots of CD, CD, I'm sure, until September 15.
Let me make sure, if it goes back to INS, that means we can't spend it.
That's right. Except on the bonds.
On what?
Except on the bonds that we're paying off.
Yeah, we can't spend it for our budget.
That's right. Can't go, can't go to general fund at all, can't be paid for anything except bond payments.
But it does enable you to pay your bonds off ultimately earlier, and you save interest expense along the way.
And I guess at this point, we're talking about the kind of what we're planning on doing, there's going to be $6 million roughly in that INS fund, when I move that 2.4 over here, okay? There's 15 years left on the bonds. One train of thought would be, well, we leave that $6 million in there, we let it keep earning interest in the last three or four years of the bonds, we won't have to charge an INS rate, we'll just use that money to pay those bonds. You could do it that way. The other way that you could do it, that I think is more fair to taxpayers now, is, okay, we got 15 years to go, you divide that $6 million by 15 years, you got about $400,000 a year, so we're going to take $400,000 a year of that money and reduce the current INS rate by two cents, and pay that $400,000 on the bonds, along with the money that, that kind of lets the people that are making the payments down get the benefit of the money that's in there, rather than just paying it at the end, when some of these people now might not be allowed to get the benefits of it.
And we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, we have the ability to do it. The other part of that that I kind of talked to y'all about is that we lower that INS rate by $400,000, we're actually going to lower it by $600,000, because $2,400,000 paid off, and that's $200,000 a year we're paying there. I actually talked about lowering the INS rate by $600,000.
Or lowering the annual payments.
Yes, by $600,000.
Just lowering the-
Well, it's not all interest, it was the amount of the note payments. We pay, we had that chapel, we had that Chapel Hill-
We had to pay like 2.2 million of the bond payments ourselves. The other eight and a half million is paid more by the state. So, I'm just saying, we wouldn't have to use tax rate money to pay for like a million five, because we got rid of $200,000 on that, we were paying off the bond, and we could take the other- And we can take the other $400,000 out of the six million we've got preserved. What I, what I suggest that we do, and I talked to the judge about doing, I think I've mentioned to y'all, is take that $400,000, put it over in the road bridge funds for the roads.
I wouldn't be for that. These are debt that we've, we've committed to for a long time.
The main thing is, the main thing is we go along. I mean, you can do it, everyone can do it.
I'd rather get rid of that debt, so we can make some...
But we can't pay it off any, we can't pay it off any faster than the bond payments are, so...
You can't pay it off, do you?
No, certain days I can. Well, it's just like any other debt. If you can call it, you're not going to pay it, but it's interest rate. You're not...
There's, there's some limitations on those bonds as to how much and when you can prepay and, and reduce.
But that don't mean you can't, we can keep the money until that date comes up that we can prepay. We don't have to spend it just because we can't pay the bond down.
We're not spending it. I'm not talking about spending it. That money's outstanding, it's a deal. But you're going to be able to lower your INS rate by a couple of cents if you want to leave your tax rate the same. You can put those two cents back in M&amp;O and put the money to roads. But the tax rate wouldn't change.
I'd rather save it to pay the debt, but that's not me.
Well, I mean, that's certainly an option. Spend what the taxpayer wants. I don't live every country. I only God will go every country.
We've been paying 15 to, what are we down to now? 13 cents on every dollar in interest since we started building the Loop? That's pretty, that's a pretty good hunk of money. It was $6 million when, first time I seen it, when I started, a year. Interest on the bonds. $6 million can do a lot of stuff instead of having a debt.
Yeah, I don't think you can make an early payment on those bonds until maybe 2024?
2035. 2034 is the last.
We'll pay off in 2034.
That's right.
I think you can make an early payment in 2024.
That's the, that's the next time we can.
Oh.
But you can't make it every time until 2024. But I'll show y'all one, and then you can just tell what you want.
Well, that's all good news. We've got a better fund balance, and we've got a better INS balance. That's much better to have it in our favor than, than not. Okay, we still need to approve this report.
Make a motion, approve the oral written report.
Motion is made to approve oral and written reports by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Item number 15 is our treasurer's report for your consideration. Okay, anyone ready to approve that treasurer's report?
Make a motion.
Motion's made to approve Commissioner Applewhite?
Second.
Second Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 16, approve budget amendments.
Number 22 is decreasing to, it's just reallocating the money and putting the capital, additional capital outlay money in there. I think everybody's seen these. And the loan from the General County for that new equipment. Number 23 is for Fund 19, which is our big equipment fund. That's where we bought that additional equipment, and I had to transfer money from General County to cover that. Number 24 is for Precinct 23, and it's just reallocating money in good line of chances. You've seen that, too. Precinct 3. And if you forget this, that was, but it was number 24. And this is, this is number 25, and it's doing the reallocations inside Precinct 4, and also putting the money in there for the loan proceeds when Jimmy bought his additional equipment. And we put that last quarter day up.
And you all have previously signed off on these, so I will do the same. Amendments formally approve those four budget amendments.
Make a motion, approve budget amendments.
Motion to approve those four budget amendments is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll sign those in a minute. Item 17, sign pay orders and approve payment.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closing comments. Number 18, as a reminder here, we will start, probably he's sitting out there in the hallway, we'll go into a workshop here prior to adjournment, but we'll get our closing comments in now. In our workshop, and anyone is welcome to attend, Prefort Complex Designs and Glenn Calvert will lead us through a discussion that involves the planning process for a large project such as, such as the annex remodel. We will specifically be talking about the needs in the annex building. We won't necessarily be talking in support or against a remodel of that, but he's going to talk to you about several different options and what you would be looking about, looking at if you were to go through that process in a modern, appropriate way, and the, the planning process, and what kind of experts you would utilize, and who would be involved in that decision-making process. So that'll probably be about an hour and a half long workshop that'll, we will begin as soon as we're finished here with our closing comments after we take maybe a five-minute break. We got all the new phones in for the Justice Center. They have not been installed yet to allow station-to-station calling. We do now have the ability to make station-to-station calling with the Sheriff's Office now. You can dial four-digit numbers throughout the county to accomplish that. So we're, we're almost there in getting a full, complete, modernized telephone system. It was good to have Ed Thatcher here today, who just began his work up there at the city, and we're grateful for Eddie's leadership during that time. Eddie will still play a key role, as I understand, there and, and with the city, and there will be a election in November that we will provide for the city to select a new councilman. So lots of, lots of things going on at the, at the city. That's all I have. Commissioner Parker?
I have comments.
Commissioner Applewhite?
No, sir.
Commissioner Fitch? Okay, Commissioner Riddle? Okay, we won't adjourn yet. We will bring the, this portion of the meeting to an end. We'll take five, 10-minute break and make sure Glenn Calvert is here with his, anybody that he is bringing. So thank you for your patience. Okay, it is, it's 10:58, and we're going to begin our final item of the agenda today, and that is to discuss here in workshop format, along with Glenn Calvert from Prefort, talking about various options that we have regarding necessary improvements to the Titus County Annex. And you heard a presentation a couple of weeks ago about some limitations that we've got, or some obstacles that we've got over there at that building, which begs the question, okay, what other options do we have out there? So, well, this will be rather informal. You can ask questions as we go, but let's let Glenn kind of guide the discussion. So Glenn, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for being here.
Okay, so I guess the first question, does anyone have any questions? Do you have questions about our report that we put together on the annex?
I will say that I did talk to our fire alarm guy, who said, you know, Brian, as I've told you before, if you get to the point where you've got to sprinkle that old building, you'll be looking at a very large, multi-hundred-thousand-dollar figure, as we have in Paris, where we've had to do the same thing, just running the, you know, running the water throughout that building to, to meet current code is going to be very expensive. He said you can probably start at a half million dollars, and it could exceed a million. I did talk to him about taking care of immediate needs over there. If we don't do a thing, we are now aware of the inadequacies of that fire alarm system over there, and as a bare minimum, I think we need to get that fire alarm functional and include some zones that are wired up there in that top story, so that should a fire begin up there in an area where we have no personnel, you would be notified of that to give everybody downstairs adequate time to get out before that upstairs collapsed. And it's, it's a real fire hazard up there. So here again, we're talking about things that because of the significance of the size of the remodel over there, as Glenn has told you, you will then be forced into a new category of requirements, one being, of course, the fire alarm, but two, the getting the sprinkler system put in over there, and then not to mention ongoing smaller problems like Americans with Disabilities Act, security issues, ingress egress, adequate restrooms, things like that.
I would say that's a good synopsis of how we're at. The $500,000 or around half a million dollars to the sprinkler system is kind of shocking, but kind of not. There is a lot of stuff added, the cement space between the attic space, the ceiling and the roof structure is packed, absolutely packed. So there's not a sprinkler, there would be a sprinkler applied in that sprinkler system. I think that's what would drive that all setup. So again, it's, having a sprinkler system is shocking, but over there, it's not really surprising. It would be something that would even be difficult to get competitive proposals on, just because every corner, there's going to be an unknown, so...
And that's the key word I took away from the last meeting, is there's a lot of unknowns. You're going to have a starting figure, but any contractor is going to want to add in, you know, a couple of pages worth of if, but if this happens, or whatever we find that we didn't expect, you're going to pay extra for that.
That's one of those open-ended contracts that you were talking about.
Yeah, and the design side, too.
Yeah, yeah. And then there was, I didn't mention roof problems. We've got an old roof over there that doesn't drain adequately, so to remodel that building just where you gain nothing from it, if you bring it up to current standards, is going to cost, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
There's a single piece of that building that could go untouched if it's remodeled. I don't care if it's roof, I don't care if it's foundation, sidewalks, life savings issues, plumbing and electrical. I know for a fact there's at least one hot wire up in that attic. I don't know where it came from, but it's on the attic, so everything up there, there are not a single, like I said, not a single part of that building that could not be touched and remodeled. You'd like to say that we could keep the walls of the roof, the walls are on the, at least on the north side. That grade aggregate material is attached to plywood or to bores with a mask, and that mask is sort of awesome. You can see bare wood showing through there. Then you start thinking, okay, so how much water that hits the north side of that building is getting into the building? You want none of those kind of issues until you start tearing the walls out on these sides. You have a question, sir?
No, that, that, when we started, the best of that, you can take your finger, I can go there right now, start doing that, and every ounce of that mortar will come out of there. It's, it's all, it's just dust. It's lime, and I guess, I remember when I was pretty big kid, they took my grandpa's fireplace out, that was part of the reason. I didn't really ever understand that. Why did the cement got too old? I didn't know cement got old. Anyway, so that's, that's the way that building is over there. It's, it's terrible. I mean, I can't imagine, as you said, every ounce of, I just can't imagine what it'd cost to fix it. There's no, in my mind, and I'm not a builder or contractor or anything, but in my mind, I just don't see how it wouldn't be cheaper to build another building at that...
Well, you got a half a million right here just in fire suppression. Fire suppression on a new building, you're looking at $2.50 to $3.00 a square foot. So $3.00 a square foot, and one of the questions, I don't know which one you could ask me, you could ask me, Dana, about how much would a new building cost? And I'll learn basic phone calls and I have some things to discuss on that. But right now, we've got about 10,000 square feet of area under roof, some of that's multiple levels, but 10,000 square feet plus or minus.
Can I get you to maybe grab one of those spare mics? There may be somebody interested in listening to this, and they watch it later on.
Okay, so, can you hear me? Okay, so we've got about 10,000 square feet over there now. That's under roof, there might be some of that square footage that is multiple levels, as you know, but 10,000 square feet. A lot of that square footage over there is not used, especially on the south side of the building, the old library areas, you know, really a lot of unused space. I'm sure some people go through there. I know some people use it as a walkway to get from the parking lot to their office, but as far as people using that on a day-to-day basis, it's really not used. And then we've got the second floor of the building that nobody goes up to. So we have unused square footage, and we have some square footage in some of those office areas that has some circulation space, but in the whole scheme of things, if you replace 10,000 square foot of usable space with that 10,000 square foot of somewhat unusable space, for instance, we've got that entire area where the vehicle registration used to be...
What do you count as the 10,000? Is that one end of the block to the other?
No, that's just the area that we're looking at. The annex part and the, add-on the old guarantee bank part, 10,000 square feet.
Does that include the upstairs layer as well?
I would say no. I think it's just the footprint of the building, but we do have some areas that are two-level.
But it does include the corner, the northeast corner here all the way to the...
It doesn't include the paving and the sidewalk and the parking. That's just the square footage of the area under the roofs. And I think...
From the judge's office, which is right up there in that front corner, back to the back where you've got all the courtroom, the, over to the corner of the district clerk, all the way up to the front corner where Judy Cook used to have her...
In general terms, from the east up to adult probation. And going all the way to the north, I'm sorry, all the way to the south is about 10,000 square feet. So as I say, and a lot of that space in that 10,000 square foot is really not used. I don't know what the square footage is, but I also do know that there's some square footage that's used now that is too tight, like in that southeast courtroom, those corridors and everything, those aren't regulation, if you want to call it courtroom, or spaces, the hallways, the restrooms, all of those things are going to need more square footage in a new building. But if you think 10,000 square foot of replacement space, I think it could all be done right there. You know, it might be two levels, but you could definitely get it all there. I think there would need to be more parking... I think there would need to be more parking and better access from the back. But if you think 2,000 square feet, Jeffrey, who you guys have met, I just called him since you asked me the question, of what does courtroom construction go for? And I think one of the questions, Carl, that, I guess he left, but the question was, how much does commercial construction go for? Well, this isn't really commercial construction, because it has increased security issues, it has audiovisual requirements, obviously it's got to be all compliant, but the median cost from documents that we have, it's a standard, it's called RS means, a document construction cost for all types of buildings. But you can look in the back of the book and find courtroom cost for construction, new courtrooms, and back in 2015, the median cost was about $210 a square foot. That means that half of the numbers are going to be above it, and half of the numbers are below it, it's the median cost. So there are other factors that go into it. So if you've got 10,000 square feet, you apply escalation cost to 2015 numbers, I would think this is going to be a $250 to $300 a square foot building. So to answer the question that Carl had, is this a $10 million building? I think it's, I think it could be significantly less than that, especially since you already own the land, you have utilities already there, basically it's design process and construction process. For the sake of this discussion, you know, you might think $5 million, and hope that it comes in below that, but for discussion purposes, for discussion purposes this early in the process, I would just kind of think about half a million. I'm sorry, five million, I wish I could get rid of that one decision. We got half a million for the, I guess I'm still thinking about water, fire suppression.
And I think we'd always probably thought along the lines of a million dollars for a light remodel to give us another courtroom over there, and two, improve the DA's offices and the judge's offices, that was before we really even talked about the deeds that were going to be piled on us, sprinkler, AC units, et cetera. Well, and that's, so that'll be one of the options that we're going to talk about. If you were to get serious about that kind of an option, then you've got to get serious about figuring out where are you going to relocate those major offices over there during an 18-month build, and...
That was my next question, is what, how long would we be looking at, possibly? I mean, I know it's just a...
In the document, the outline I gave you, I gave you several timelines for different activities, and based on which direction as a group you decide to go to, we could actually build a milestone schedule for that, so that you could get an idea of where your overlaps, like right now, you look at those timelines, you think, okay, this is a month, that's three months, that's two months, that's six months, there's some of those that can be overlapped in scheduling. But at the end of the day, you've got to move the services and demo the building, and then start. So those are definitely, that's definitely a timeframe, and 18 months is probably a good timeframe to think about, as to how long that would take to get your services. Those, not only do you have to move them, but you have to move them into an area that's up and running, so that there's no drop in county services, especially for the courts. So that may be a, that may be a completely separate conversation as to where that might could go to. But I would say an 18-month demo, from demolition to turn over the keys, you might think about 18 months. There could be all of the design work, there's something in there about programming that we can talk about, all of that stuff can be done, and would be done before anything moved out of there.
Just to make sure, we're talking about starting down at Thistle Street, and First Street, and coming back this way, all the way to those buildings on the corner.
That's debatable, right now, you've got the print shop that the county owns on the west side, you've got adult probation right next to it. Through the programming phase, part of the programming will be a needs assessment, what offices, what spaces, what square footage does the county need? And you may go through the program and say, you know what, we only need 12,000 square feet. So the question at that point would become, okay, do we want to do 12,000 square feet right here? Do we want to do 12,000 square feet in two levels, and keep those other two buildings the way they are? You know, my first thought would be, okay, is there, is there a way we can determine our needs and fit it on the footprint of the annex building that you currently have, and possibly leave those other two services and two buildings as they currently are? That's an option.
You know, those two buildings, those two are a lot older than the bank building.
But they haven't been chopped up and turned over as much.
But I, myself, think we need some extra parking over there. If we have to go up two levels to get there, the parking, I think we need to address that while we're, you know, if we're going in this location.
And that would be part of the programming, how much parking do you need? How many people are working there every day? What's the typical number of people that are involved in the court on particular day? How many people do you expect in the gallery? Things like that.
We're okay, except on court days.
The needs assessment is what, during the programming will tell you, it'll come to a really clean and straightforward conclusion, that we need this many parking places, we need this many square feet, we need this many courtrooms, this many offices, all of those things.
You know, I guess I was thinking more in terms, if you really committed to that property over there, I'm thinking you bulldoze the entire block, which means buying out a couple of others back here at the back corner, and tearing down your existing building. I mean, if we're going to make a modern building there that's going to serve for the next 100 years, you don't need any of that stuff that's over there now.
Anytime you try to build around components that are already there, and the components I'd be talking about now are the adult probation and the building on the corner, you're always going to have certain constraints. If you were to do that, you would be limiting yourself to access on the north, the east, and the south side of the building, and that's going to be potentially secured access. You've already got a hallway that connects the annex to the adult probation. The adult probation is already dealing with some restroom issues, but you've got drug testing, and some of the same areas that you've got, the staff using, there's already some cross assemblies in there that you typically would try to like to avoid. But anytime you try to do design and construction around an existing building, that existing building is going to always be there, and potentially be a constraint throughout the whole process.
Hopefully, we wouldn't even consider keeping those buildings. Not by my opinion, they'd be a foolish effort. I wouldn't think about keeping them, just by my own senses.
Well, then in that case, you would need to allow and add the square footage of the, I'm just using a 10,000 square foot number. Obviously, adult probation's full of offices, so you need to add that square footage and the other square footage to the overall project, whenever you just do global budgeting for that.
One time, from the hall of the annex, all the way to the street there, and then back, I figured it's 7,000 feet. That's been a while back, and I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't know.
I looked for a note, I wondered, and I can't find it, but I don't know why.
I would like to say that we got very precise on our square footage, but our square footage came off of Google Earth. We didn't measure every room in that building.
Yeah.
And that's what we do on a lot of our buildings like this, whenever we first get involved with it. I mean, it's a real good, got a real good mapping tool.
Well, if we kept that property, that'd give us some parking place.
Yeah, sure.
A modern building, like a two-story or three-story.
Well, one of the good things that I like about your standard county seat in Titus County, no exception, you have parking all the way around it, it's pretty nice.
Now, you know, another one of the options we'll talk about is, you know, if you could find another location, build new there, leave your current operations in place until moving day. You know, how important is it to be right there where the annex is versus somewhere else? You've had other counties build quite ways from downtown. Was that Cass County? Has a big metal building called the Justice Center, maybe that's one of them.
I think it is Cass County, if I'm not mistaken.
You know, that's a possibility too. You know, finding a location would be the biggest challenge, but you would, you could forego having that 18-month dislocation of those offices, which is going to be a big, a big deal. I very much like that location, but I do dread that relocation for the clerk's office and the, that would be, that would be one big disruption, and having to duplicate a couple, if not three, courtrooms during that time.
You know, one of the things that I can see making that difficult, and I'm just shooting from the hip here, but I don't know what all the requirements for that space would be. You need a courtroom, you need offices for your judges, that would be nice to be secure.
Would it, would it need three courtrooms?
No, not for a, not for a temporary, I mean, you might survive with a, with one courtroom during that, it would be tough during that 18 months, you know, that back courtroom just used for jury selection.
You know, one of the things that schools do all the time, and I almost hate to throw this term out there, is portable buildings. You can make a large portable building that's a courtroom, have another portable building that's somewhat secure, that's connected to it for your judges' chambers and offices. You know, those are conditioned, they're portable, you could go into it knowing what the rent is going to be on those, and when you're done with them, they come get them. All you need is space and chairs, and, you know, maybe a glorified car table at the front, and some, you know, a public address system.
We had no probation upstairs. We moved them over there. We moved back, I know it'd be crowded, but it was crowded before, county clerk's office crowded, James's office crowded, there was a lot of, a lot of people.
Well, there's probably also people in that adult probation's area upstairs, you moved across the street, I'm just guessing that there's somebody in those spaces now.
Upstairs, there's a lot of that office that we don't use.
Okay.
A lot of it. I mean, all of the officers were cold huffing there, across from him, and then behind him, right on down to the split, really, we don't use, and then they got the office people, they could be, I don't know what could happen, but I mean, there's a lot of space that's not used. Of course, for 18 months, we could do a lot of equipment up or tighten up. I mean, I think, but of course, my kids say I'm too frugal.
The good thing, though, is that as a board of county commissioners, you have time to think about the next steps. It's not like you've got to jump and do stuff, other than the life safety. You've got time to, okay, does it make sense to relocate? And maybe there's some due diligence that's required, okay, how much would new land cost? One of the things I would definitely warn you on, because I'm dealing with a project right, like this in North Dakota right now, is that they've got land at a very reasonable cost, but just because it's free, or very low-cost land, be careful of that, because of utilities, soils, all those kind of things. So you've got time to do due diligence, to see if it makes sense to rebuild there, or to go someplace else, and then also do the due diligence, okay, if we do build here, what, how are we going to, to make those services continue? So it's, it's like this can be a very well-thought-out process. And this is the first time we've ever talked about this as a group, as far as I know, but as long as you can make the pieces fit together, it really can work pretty smoothly.
Do you see any big negatives of choosing that property, that existing property, other than the relocation?
I like the adjacency to this, obviously. I think the courtrooms there work well with downtown. You know, if you move it somewhere else, then all those people are going to have to get in cars and come down here anyway, you know, for breaks, for lunch, or whatever. The adjacency works really well, I think. I think the big key, or the most difficult part, is what do you do between now and then? I think if you work on the whole block as opposed to just a portion of it, I think it makes the design easier, I think it makes programming easier, and I think it'll make And at the end of the day, it may not cost a whole lot more, in fact, it may cost less, because everything we do with a new building, if those two buildings are left, we have to do, have to design and construct so that we don't damage those buildings. Those buildings have a load-bearing masonry foundation under them, so if you start digging next to it, you're always got to be worried, okay, is it going to undermine the existing foundation of those two buildings that you're trying to save?
What about the buildings, I don't know, the others behind, where the judge's park?
Yes, sir.
That building. Clement's Insurance and the Fair Association Office is what's in that building, and...
Well, the biggest building, the one closest to us right now, was owned by James Spears, remember, we paid for some dirt work for him? He recently passed away, I know that his heirs are interested in selling that building.
Sure, use that for marketing. To me, considering building it somewhere else, not having it all together, just be out of the question, but that's just my opinion.
What about using, couldn't you have some district court over in Camp County's courthouse? Could they accommodate?
If I said yes, I'd just be guessing, but definitely my thoughts work.
Maybe we might could lease or rent a building that's for sale in town like that church that's next door to Chamber of Commerce there, you know, if something's available at the time, that's more like a church building type building or something. We'd have to be lucky to find it, and then have that to rent until we could get in for court purposes.
Is that, is that building for sale right now?
There's another one out by the high school that is too. It's got a big metal building behind it.
They still have a church in it? And I'm not sure about that nail church, I'm not sure.
They are, they're having, I think they're just renting it, both buildings, I meant both places, they're, they're just leasing.
Ritting it out to somebody else?
Yeah, another church, if renting that one, they're still having church out there.
We may have to rent an office for like district clerk and stuff. Probably keep it close, and, I like the idea of downtown, just close to the courthouse, convenient, it's good for downtown, it's good for downtown business.
I hate to say it, move it from downtown myself, I'd prefer to keep it here if at all possible, but...
When you say downtown, you mean within one block? Or within three blocks, or what?
I mean, I like the, where it's at, myself. That's just, that's just me, I like where it's at there.
What if you left everything in those buildings? Use this parking lot over here where the bell tire is, build a building there, and then tear this down after you move in, and put your parking lot over on this side? Man, it's just a thought, you could flip-flop those two properties, it might crowd the Justice Center over there, might incorporate it in the building project.
One of the things I would caution about that, if you've got parking over here versus developing this lot with parking around it, you're going to have pedestrians crossing 271, constantly.
Crossing 271?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jefferson.
Jefferson.
If they're, if they're going over there and parking here. If they're, if they're going over there and parking here.
Talking about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Madison, not Jefferson.
I'm still sitting here thinking about what you just said about that block over there. I mean, you got a block here, you got a block there, do you...
I just see a cool building right behind that bell tower, you know, built from the corner out or something.
The bell tower.
You would build in between the two current buildings or you doze everything that's over there?
I don't know. I don't know. That's another thing. I don't want, I just try not to displace a lot of people. Maybe you could build the building and then move people into there and then tear those buildings down for parking lots or something.
You might could get a lot of portable buildings over there on the parking lot.
Yeah.
Over there. And you kill a lot of parking, but you might could get ten thousand square feet or eight thousand, whatever you need.
And that lot over there is vacant. There's a city on the far corner.
Where the Justice Center are, that building.
That, that next to the Justice Center, we own that. But if that's a...
Park or put people...
Those, those buildings that Chapel Hill got out there?
Or is that just vacant?
Those were frankly...
That might have been big, pretty...
Yeah, frankly, give to them.
Concrete.
It comes from something through the state and, you know, we might can do something like that and set them over there to...
At least we own the whole block.
I just wouldn't consider this if we couldn't get those buildings. That would be... If they have, they'd go all their used up on that one block.
Yeah.
Not have their used up anywhere except here.
Yeah, I like the new. There. We said to relocate.
Anybody not like the idea of trying to keep it here for any reason? Would you say that's your first choice if you had a choice?
That, that would be my choice, just to keep right here.
But new, new construction, bulldozing some or all, keeping, just keeping it there. If you, if you had that entire block to work with, would you try to maybe centralize something on the block and have parking all the way around?
That would be the...
I believe so.
That'd be, that's what I'd think.
That's what I think.
One of the things I think that you would have the opportunity to do if you had the whole, the whole block basically, is put a multiple-level building in the middle of it, have parking on the side, and have something other than concrete and parking bumpers right against the building. That's one thing that makes this courthouse look nice, is the area around it. You know, you don't want to try to build a building that you are going to have to provide parking on a postage stamp because then you've got building and street. So this will give you the opportunity to potentially have a little bit of an offset and a bump, a buffer off of the main traffic going back and forth and still have the parking.
Are you talking about a green belt or like...
No, I'm just talking about just...
Parking lot like we have here?
Yeah, with some sort of landscape or something between the building and the parking. Not much, but if you do it on too small of a piece of property, then you're going to have parking right up to the face of the building.
Do costs go up astronomically with, say, a three-story versus a two versus a one?
I would probably look at a two-story at most. I wouldn't try to go three on this. You save some on the skin cost, but then your cost for everything else goes up.
Like get an efficiently-designed building?
Yeah.
Efficient halls and efficient...
And again, that would come through the programming. It would be good if there was a decision made that, yes, we are going to build on this entire block so that during the programming phase, you kind of know the, the boundaries of your, of your project that you're trying, and your problems that you're trying to solve. If you go into programming and say, you know what, we think we might have the entire block, we might just have the, the location of these three, and we might try to save the two, even in programming, that starts putting constraints on your ability to make decisions. But to answer your question, I would probably look at two stories and probably no more than that. Something we have done, and I'm always thinking about the future, back in nineteen ninety-one, one of the first jobs I had out of school was building a bed tower at Children's Hospital in Dallas. The hospital, the bed tower is already there. My assignment was to design floors on top of the bed tower that was already there. And the bed tower that was there in nineteen ninety was designed for those additional floors. They just added the additional floors about five years ago, but it's stuff that we designed back in nineteen ninety, so if we just did two, thinking about where the county might go, you can easily build in structure.
Add two then.
For the future. Just something you might think about.
Well, then maybe we'll, we'll guide our discussion. Sounds like that's kind of a common opinion now, is that that's still a good location and sounds like everybody would be in favor of scrapping the idea of rehiring or some kind of new structure. Let me ask you all about time, timeframe. You know, you, it's never too early to begin the planning process. Would you envision this being something that you would move forward with quickly or something that you would maybe study and design with a target of beginning five years from now? Some of the pluses that we have going for us right now, we've got a strong fund balance. You're going to need to do some kind of borrowing for a project of this magnitude. You've heard Carl talk about some relief in the interest and sinking fund. You've got very good, low-interest rates right now, but you have several things going for us that a project of this size doesn't always have going for it. And I'm not saying we're in a bind right now and we have to have some of this. You've heard what the judges have told you. I think as a bare minimum, I'd, I'd like to see this project get planned, and then you can kind of decide as to when you would want to, want to implement this.
I think, Laura, we're way, we're just putting off the problem.
Well, and, and too, I hate to, we, we know we've got safety concerns now over there. I hate to spend a whole bunch of money trying to do stuff with that when, you know, if we could go ahead and, and get the, get it into process. I'm not saying start it tomorrow or next week or, and I know we can't do that, but I'm just using that as an example. And, you know, I think it's something we need to look at in the near future rather than out, out to under five years from now. That's just me.
Well, Glenn, you know, if, if we said yes, we left this meeting today and said, let's go full force. We're looking at, what, a year before you bulldoze something over there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Easy. I think some of the timeframes, I had several months on there for the programming phase, and that's a series of several workshops where you're rolling up your sleeves and you're doing needs assessments, you're having the opportunity, maybe not you, but whoever's doing the programming is interviewing the different user groups to define, to define what they need out of a space like this. And bouncing things off of you and letting you prioritize different options. The programming phase is very important, but it's really interesting to watch that develop. The project through programming almost defines itself as far as the square footage is, and I would recommend all of you to be a part of it, as well as maybe someone like, I don't know, Tim Ingram. The big, the, the main users of the facility that are going to be in and out of there are his people. I don't know if he's the guy or some, you know, someone from the sheriff, then maybe it's one or two of the judges that go in there on a basis. And they don't have to be involved throughout the process, but they, their input needs to be heard. But the programming could easily take three or four months. I actually brought an example of a program document I'll let you look at. But then after the programming, you define the project, the design of the project, because it is a public project, would have to be sent out an RFQ, Request for Qualification, for different design teams to turn in design proposals for this, and it's not a proposal. You don't select design teams on price. That's the reason why it's Request for Qualifications. You select them based on what they do and, and what their abilities are.
That's the process we went through when we were selecting a, a contract manager to manage the loop that ended up being PTP.
Yeah.
We, we had a committee that consisted of, oh gosh, Judge Russell and Jerry Botner and Daryl Groves, you know, that interviewed these companies and made that choice based on qualification primarily and then pricing secondarily.
Yeah.
So you've got to go through that. You'd have to go through that process just to determine who are the professionals that are going to participate in this project.
That's right.
Then you, you know, the time to bid out the project in addition to, you know, coming up with the drawings and all that stuff.
Sure.
I mean, let's say you started now, first of, first of September, you know, you're looking at not, not beginning the demo process till, say, the first of two thousand twenty-one, and then you'd be in mid-two thousand twenty-two before it was, it was completed, so...
These projects do have a...
Three years from now.
Large lead time up to them. We've got projects that we're working on that we've been working with either county commissioners or county fair boards or stuff like that. We just opened up one in Cheyenne. We started working with them six years ago, and they just opened up their building this last week. So there's a, that had to go through an election, and this might have to go through an election, I don't know, but there is a, it is a process.
So budgetary decisions we're making right now, based on the information Carl gave you, are important, you know, for this project. You know, what you do today might hamstring you on a project like this if you don't, if you're not thinking about this.
The good thing about that is that comparatively, compared to a full construction project, the first few steps aren't huge dollars like the construction, like, for instance, the programming. There are costs associated with that. That's not a two-hundred-thousand-dollar item. That's going to be significantly less than that. But the items that you could actually get some, some progress towards a potential project you could be doing now, and the numbers you have to allocate to a budget aren't huge numbers like a construction project would be, less than a cost of a dump truck.
Small amount, somebody probably would be buying that property.
Yeah, checking on the...
Get that out of the way.
Buildings over there.
Yeah.
Acquire them, it's going to change the plan completely.
Get them to that down, as far as I'm concerned. Because we can all, we can make the parking lot out of it, we don't do anything else.
And the thing about it is if they'd be willing, they could go ahead and rent it back from you. They'd have cash in hand, rent it for the next year, give them time to plan. They got money in their hand to relocate or do whatever they want, so it's not like you're, it's not like they'd have to be relocated right now.
Then make the parking lot when you finish the...
Well, do you want to walk through the discussion then, Glenn, based on option number one, three, I guess, or three?
Okay. Option one, option two, option three. Option three, program, fund, design, relocate existing operation, demo, and rebuild a existing site. And just in case you hadn't looked at this, I tried to think of four different options, and you guys have already looked at, and we've discussed all the options without really thinking about it or without looking at this, but it sounds like option three. And then, of course, the first step is address the immediate life safety concerns, and Judge Lee's already talked about that. The process, and these are just shooting from the hip, but things that we've already discussed as well, site selection, funding and purchase of the site, and funding and purchasing that site may include buildings that are already there if the entire block where we're talking about would be the site that we're trying to consider. Then issuing an RFQ where you send out Request for Qualifications for the programming phase, and through that programming phase, you would come up with conceptual design and conceptual budgets. So that way, things like budget considerations going forward, you'd know those, you'd know how big the building needs to be, you would know what that building needs to be able to do through the programming. Like I said, through programming, the project kind of defines itself through needs assessment. And then I think there should also be a budgeting component to that programming so you know what you're dealing with. You know that it's going to be a twelve-thousand-square-foot building and it's going to cost X amount of dollars, and that arms you with information you need so you can start setting budgets for the next two or three years. Okay, so after that, obviously, there's always got to be project funding. Is this going to be paid for out of, out of existing funds? Is this going to have to be a, a bonded financially project, or where's the money coming from? Part of that funding would include the design services. On, on a courtroom building like this, you're looking at seven to eight percent. It's a fairly complex building. And typically, you send out an RFQ, Request for Qualification, just like you mentioned earlier, whenever you're looking for a construction manager on the loop. These are for architectural and engineering design services.
Just describe, in, in item two there, what kind of company would you be interviewing for programming, conceptual plans, and budgeting? Just a typical architect?
A lot of times, it'll be led by an architectural firm, but there are some firms that do nothing but master planning. But I would expect architectural firms to respond to that.
And not necessarily the same one that continues with you there in item number four?
The person or the firm that you selected in RF, in item two for programming, more than likely is going to be interested and would also respond to the RFQ for design. If you didn't like them in the planning and the programming process, then that gives you the out, we're not going to use them, because whoever you select at that phase, you're going to be working with them for the next eighteen months and then some. So if you don't like them in the planning process, that gives you an opportunity to go a different direction. I think you're, I don't know what your Roman numeral four says.
Yeah, you go, you number three.
Okay, so I did a cut and paste there. This was Friday afternoon. That should just be design services. That's going to be architectural and all the engineering disciplines that come after the RFQ design or RFQ for design services. So when you get the building designed, and the design is going to be a function of your program, right? So then you've got design documents, bid documents. You can either do a hard bid project or you can do a construction manager at risk. Construction manager at risk, I think, is a good scenario, and that's what we typically Allows you to select the firm, construction firm, that you feel is the best fit for this project. We typically select the construction managers based on qualifications. We'll ask them questions about your personnel, your work history, check their references. We have an interview process, and we have a group like this that's, that everyone is grading these interviews, just like you would be, if I was a contractor, you'd be grading their responses. And then at the end of the responses, and after everyone's been graded, what we've done in the past is they turn in a job cost form, and that form, after all the other qualifications are graded, would include things like what their monthly cost would be and what they want to make, what their fee to manage that project would be, and that's graded as well. Just because they're the cheapest one in the room doesn't mean that they're best. In the past, we've graded them, one according to price, you like the low price, obviously, but then you look at value. Do you feel like they know the scope of work based on their interview? And do you feel like what you're paying them brings good value for the county? So we grade them, we grade their fee another way, just, other than just low price. A lot of times, a low price is the one that missed stuff, and I don't think the county wants to be in a scenario where you're having to police a general contractor for the next eighteen months because he may have missed stuff. So we grade the fee as well. So that gets through the RFQ for construction services and then obviously implement the... So that gets through the RFQ for construction services and then, obviously, implement design. And that's, in other words, construction.
What role would maybe you and Preford Complex Designs play in something like this?
We don't have to play any role. I will say that we have done this, been part of the process in lots of locations. We're involved in probably four projects across the country just like this, different type projects with the same scenario.
And what role do you play in there? As an advisory role or...
Well, it kind of morphs. There's one project that we've been involved with since probably 2014, and we did several programming projects. And keep in mind, this is a little bit different scenario. That's all private money. This is public money. We did interview for the project. We were awarded the project, and I've been working with them, doing things just like this, walking them through the process. They asked us to hire the design team. So in that case, we were guiding the project. We hired the architect, hired all the engineering firms. We did the programming. We did building layout with the architect. We do all the structural engineering and stuff like that. I'm not here trying to sell our services. We're plenty busy. But we could do as much or none of it, you know? It depends on what you guys wanted to do. What I could see in a situation like this is that if there was, through the planning stage or programming stage, we probably wouldn't be involved in any of it unless you guys just want to ask us some questions about, "What do you think about this?" We'd be more than happy to help. But as far as programming is concerned, a courtroom or courthouse is not our cup of tea. We do a lot of heavy commercial. We do lots of fair projects, county projects. We work for lots of county commissioners and fair boards, but we don't build courthouses or don't design courthouses. There's other people. But then whenever it came to structural work and stuff like that, then obviously, we'd be interested in that.
Does that mean you get an architectural firm that's got courthouse experience and security experience?
Yes, I would look for someone that's got this kind of a track record.
Talk to several of those schools and conventions, got a few connections, and they got current stuff. They've been building for other counties pretty neatly.
The programming part of this, as I said earlier, is very important. I think it's something that if you got engaged with it, it'd almost be fascinating, the way this thing designs itself, if it's done right. It does take a good amount of time, you know, on the commissioner's part. It's not gonna be a... It's not gonna be a 20-hour-a-week drudgery. It might be a two-hour meeting every three weeks is about what your time commitment would be. So you'd meet, feed all kind of information, watch stuff fall out, then the programming team would go away, decipher all that information, bring it back, and it's really a pretty neat process.
So the first things, if we were to put something on an agenda, I guess the first decision would be to move forward with a project that would include demolition of some or all of the current annex facilities and purchasing any necessary existing buildings?
Just the building part. And when I say building, I should say temporary building part. It's almost a project and a logistical project just by itself. You know, I can see maybe one or two of you doing nothing, but that's like, it's almost like you gotta divide and conquer little parts and pieces of this. Maybe Applewhite does portable buildings and these got free when it's all done. But, you know, if everybody's in charge of it, then it's kind of like everybody's always wondering who's doing what. But it's almost like different components of this project needs to have one person that is arranging for it. And the relocation of services, in my mind, is one thing that someone's working on. That's their little deal. They're involved in the programming phase, but they're also working on that. Finding the building, setting up temporary utilities, you know, sewer service.
I honestly see having a professional lead that process as opposed to us. We don't have any training there.
Well, maybe not. That person may not have to do it, but have a direct contact with different parts of this. For instance, when your programming team comes, you know, maybe they talk to Mr. Riddle, and that's their contact, and he's the one that's arranging from, you know, with everybody else. Just kind of divide and conquer.
Start. Well, if we bring the idea up, then maybe these department heads can start figuring, "I'm gonna leave this much space. I can get by with this for 18 months, and I need two offices." Maybe another person might say, "I'll just work out of my car. I need an office up here. I'll just come and go, or wherever y'all need us." Maybe we can condense to survive for 18 months or so. So, yeah. Have to have some meetings.
Obviously, those discussions with those department heads, I see occurring during that programming, conceptual plans, and budgeting. You'll be talking to them about what are your needs in a new building and what are your needs during relocation.
And that shouldn't be something that you guys have to do. That should be something the programming team does. They'll go to those people, possibly get names from you guys, but go to those people, and they'll do the interviews and, you know, give you the opportunity to sit in or not. But that's what they do, is do all the interviews. You don't have to be a part of that process. You know, I just thought about something as far as temporary facilities. You even have the space over here, the way I understand it, is vacant space. North of Lar is on the corner right there. I know that it seemed like there's open space in that building. I'm just trying to think of square footage that, you know, you could move into and do a... Maybe you temporarily in a demising wall that's so it's more enclosed and conditioned. I don't, you know, have some security there.
Well, then I'll ask you to be thinking about, you know, what your job requirements are of you. We take something like this on during your tenure, and that's gonna be a distraction you've got to deal with. Are you prepared and willing to do that in the next three years?
I would hope that throughout the process, like I said, programming might be a couple hour meeting every two or three weeks. And then during the design phase, it's a meeting at particular design milestones where the design team is showing you what they've come up with, gives you the opportunity to ask questions. Why do we have that room there? What's that room supposed to do? During the construction phase, you have a construction manager report. That could actually happen at the beginning of every call meeting. You know, the construction manager's gonna go through, "Okay, we're doing this. These are some of the problems that we've had. These are our pay estimates." You guys would be looking at pay estimates and things like that, get the chance to ask him questions about particular items that looks out of line to you. But there would be people doing all of this work and providing you with information and insight on a standard basis. But as far as having to roll up your sleeves for the next three months, yeah, you would be informed, but you wouldn't have to be involved in it on an everyday basis, would be my hope.
I'm just thinking right now of that computer room over there across the street. It's the main nerve center for our network and our telephone system. I don't know where that would end up. Any other questions?
Yep.
What else should we discuss today, Glenn?
You know, it's difficult building projects, and it's easy to kick the can down the road and let the next group 15 years have the same discussion.
So...
If you're kicking it down the road, every time we disconnect something in that attic or...
Yeah.
We knew it was coming. Just gotta get a look back.
If you have the opportunity to do it, to do it right, it never gets any easier than today. It's always easy to kick it down the road. Let it be someone else's challenge. But I've always found that if you start planning, it never gets any easier than that. You know money's never gonna get you cheaper than it is right now.
That's true.
Everything goes up.
My grandpa always said, "If you wait and get everything just right before you go to St. Louis, you'll never go to St. Louis." Well, he picked St. Louis. I never know.
Well, the pluses that we've got that a lot of projects don't have, you've got a location. You've got...
No location.
Well, you've got favorable financial environment here. We've gotten relief from a payoff of some bonds. We've gotten a relief from construction funds left over, and we've got some coming reduction in annual tax rate devoted to debt service. Those are two big, big items that you don't always have.
So we're gonna put on the agenda for the next meeting to do...
Start.
Make the most of it. We start, see about buying that property.
Site selection, we got that. Funding and purchase. There are some other properties over there.
Well, in this workshop, I don't think any action items could come out.
No, for a future meeting.
But we can certainly begin the discussions. See, you know, if you're gonna have an absolute brick wall, you talk to some of those owners over there.
Okay, well...
Well, you've got something to think about. I don't know exactly what I'll put on the next agenda, but I'll put something on the agenda to at least let the public know before thinking that there's no action on this workshop. But I'll put something on the next agenda. Any questions for Glenn while you've got him here?
I think he's done a good job kind of explaining what they have found and what they've... I mean, the direction we need to go. It's helped me out considerably, so...
The thing that I like about this is that if it's planned right, it's really an enjoyable process. It's not a drudgery. We just finished one in Cheyenne. We started working with the two guys there seven years ago. It went through one election. I had them elected, it's $21,000 job. That failed. They came back and retooled it. We got it to a decreased scope, got it to a $10,000 project. And passed the election, they called us from Cheyenne and said, "We want you to design this project." I said, "Okay, so we'll find an architect. We'll go with them." They said, "No, we want you to hire them." So we hired an architect from Cheyenne, mechanical engineer from Cheyenne, and we already knew what the project looked like through the program. And it's been a... And then they want us to hire the contractor. So we sent out our Q's for contractors and had myself and six other people on it, hired that guy. And it has been a great project. Hired the right contractor. I felt like we had the right team, had the right relationship, and we grew it up. Smooth. It's not... Not that difficult.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll bring this meeting to an end with an adjournment.